Thanks for having your attention. We're going to get pizza in just one minute. Jason, where'd you go? Sent me a video. He thought it would be good to start the show with. You can watch this real quick. He said it's from a friend of a friend of a friend's.
Nobody that...
I don't condone it at all.
So the question is, how close are you allowed to fly to? What's that rule? Anybody remember what that rule is as far as minimum distance or stuff?
500 feet, 1,000 feet for buildings and people and stuff. Is it something like that? 500 feet, but 1,000 if you're over cities and houses.
It was a thousand, I would say.
Okay. If you're out over the water.
If you're out over the water where there's nobody, you come down to the deck.
Is it like 500 feet?
500.
500 feet if it's a vehicle.
Then when you approach the boat.
It's 200 feet.
Well, let's see what happens.
It depends on the weather.
Depends on the weather. So the girls got on.
Might be 50 feet, let's see.
You can do that thing with your eyes on.
Could you scoot down a little bit? There you go.
Hold it. Did she fall? Did she fall?
No.
I didn't. My other friends of mine, his friend.
Oh wow.
He's in Alaska.
They water ski in Alaska? I guess.
I guess so.
Wow. Alright, so grab some pizza and then we'll get cranked. Okay, so, as you can see, Taylor is not here. Taylor is on his way to Wisconsin for a wedding. And then he's going to Oshkosh, which doesn't start for another couple of weeks, but he was wanting to get a campsite. So I guess he's going to skate that out early. Anyway, so, I get to do this on my own with your participation. Thank you all for coming tonight. And we've got several instructors here, so if I say something that doesn't make sense, or you've got some help, they can straighten me out. So, please feel free to ask questions as we go and participate, and we'll get cranked. So we saw one kickoff video, we've got another one. Who here gets a Pilot Workshop's email or subscription to them or so, here or there? So they have a series called VFR Club now. IMC Club, BMC Club, I'm sorry, BMC Club, starting up. And Jeff Van West and Keith Smith did a video which is pretty interesting, so we're gonna look at that. We'll talk about any introductions that we have of new members or guests this evening. New developments, we'll talk about the approach of the month. And we'll discuss a scenario from the IMC Club. And then we'll get our calendar set for next meeting. Okay, so, if we need this work. That didn't work.
He still doesn't mention our altitude until I start to ease down again, still a bit less. Just as we cross that hill and it passes outside his window.
Ow, wow, there's a pretty good trees right velocity. Yep. I was looking for a vassy. Speed's running out, let me know. I'm sorry. There's not blowing right down the road. That was kinda crappy. I should... That worked out. My only concern was the altitude. I should've said something sooner. There was only once I looked out the window, we were trying to run by maybe 200 or 300 feet. That I just hadn't seen in front of us, was just a total guess, not having the vassy served. But it did feel like we were low eventually. Yeah, and that's why I started leveling off, and I'm like, God, that just feels wrong. Exactly, I got to the synthetic vision too light, too, as I turned it on, we were just passing 300. Well, there's a good example of a black hole without a vassy.
Yeah, were we really only 200 to 300 feet from that hill? We were back there the next day, so we used the data from the iPad to re-fly the exact same path and altitudes in daylight. It's hard to tell with the fisheye effect of the camera, but we passed 100 to 200 feet above those trees. We're below the hill on the left. Any lower the night before, and we would've seen the runway vanish behind the hill between us and the airport. Montpelier has no vassy for this runway, probably because of this hill on final. Had we briefed a night approach, we should've caught the lack of a vassy, which would've tipped us off. Even if we had flown an instrument approach in a Montpelier, we could've fallen victim to the illusion in that final descent from NDA to the runway. You know, it's easy to look at that video after the fact and say, "I'd never get that low." Or, "I'm always flying instrument approach into an unfamiliar airport after sunset." But the truth is, I know half a dozen names of better aviators than I'll ever be, who got tripped up by some combination of events that ended badly. I'll never know exactly what happened, because we know cameras, and they're not around to tell me the tale. And in this case, cameras were running, and it ended well. So we get to share one more lesson learned in real world VFR.
Good.
It's a good thing he wasn't lined up with a runway.
Yeah.
Properly, he was to the right.
Yeah.
Very permoned to the right. Yeah, just to the left, he did, a lot closer.
These are skilled guys. They're very skilled aviators, and they just about got pretty darn close that night. Doing some videos. So, takeaways from that, what can you learn?
It'll never happen to me.
Yeah, until it does.
Yeah, until it does.
What else?
Better brief the approach, huh?
Brief the approach, make sure you gather all the information at night. I think Jeff was expecting a vassy to fly down and have him some good guidance to get down to the runway, and he didn't.
That might've been a good place for a user waypoint. With an altitude above the runway to set yourself up on your three-degree glide path.
Okay.
Since there's no ILS into there.
Right.
You could set up a user waypoint where it's maybe a mile off the end of the runway and 500 feet above or something like that.
Okay. So to give you some good guidance coming down.
Give you an idea anyway.
So if an airport doesn't have a happy vassy, what's another technique to get to the airport safely? VFR?
We've talked about 300 to 1.
Down on the ramp, you could wait.
We use that for visual approaches where there's not a DME. But if you're five miles from the runway, you need to be 1,500 feet above for a three-degree descent pad. But that doesn't tell you anything about the terrain that's around here. But at least sets you up for a... You can cross-check if you have a DME or wave measuring distance. You can use that rule, some sort of 100 mile out there, 300 feet above the runway.
Okay, two miles, six hundred yards all the way out.
So three to one all the way out.
Well, if he had his terrain on, if it was a Garmin with terrain, it'd have been...
Screaming?
Screaming.
Yeah.
Yeah, a long time ago.
How about going to the airport high enough and then entering the traffic pattern when you're over top of the airport? So you know you're safe, and you can enter the pattern, it's gonna do it the straight in. Do a normal pattern, hit the downwind.
Would you descend into a pattern, especially a clear?
Would you? Is that the question?
That's a question.
Yeah. I mean, you're talking on the radio. Honestly, I find if everybody's got their stuff to do and lights on at night, you can see an airplane better at night than in the daytime. So I don't have a problem with that, going over the top and entering 45.
Descending into it, just kind of circling the airport?
Yep. And coming through a 45 entry to the downwind.
So you would try and scoop out and come into 45 to the downwind?
I would, just for that reason, see if I descend down the top or something.
Yeah, 'cause this is one thing, if you decide to just drop down into the area, land on top of somebody who must be...
No, just do your normal procedures, but arrive over the airport above pattern altitude. And then work out and set yourself up in the downwind for 45 entry and go that way.
Clouds are low here.
Yeah, two things on that particular scenario. One, we just picked up a brand-new series, a G6 with the Perspective Plus in it. And this particular Avionics box has got another feature, they just rolled these things up, where you can actually go to the Procedure section and load a visual approach to a runway. And it will give you a glide path and a path. And there's two modes, you can do a straight in or vectors to final. And on the straight in, correction, on the straight in, it gives you a 1.7 degree glide path and a final approach fix about five miles out. If he would've done that in this thing, it wouldn't have worked. Wouldn't have worked, I mean, it would've got him killed. And on this particular airplane, we're recommending vectors to final, because that gives you a higher glide path, speed of glide path moving further out, but just something to be aware of. The second thing, and this kind of frightened me a little bit, this goes back 1977. My wife's brother was getting married Monday weekend in Iowa, and my sister was getting married the following weekend in Iowa in August. And nobody wants to be in Iowa in August. So we decided to go on a vacation to visit some old Air Force chums out in Boston. And so we flew up in Boston, long day, it was a bonanza. And kind of what you were talking about here is, it's nighttime, clear for the visual approach, okay? And I enter a 45 on the downwind, and I'm walking over there, and it's lower, you know, it's hot, muggy, and everything else. And I got myself a little wide, 'cause I wanted to make sure that everything was okay. Flipped the landing light on, and I looked out the front, and there's this water tower in front of me, it says Amesbury.
Oh.
Yeah.
Can you turn the light off?
Yeah. The light that I saw, it took a little...
Tower went away.
Yeah, exactly. But, you know, that was a real trap I put myself into that I would not have committed. And for that, you know, I should not have abandoned the instrument procedure. I should have formed an instrument approach where I would have some protection, rather than saying Amesbury, honestly, got me frightened.
Yeah, wow.
What would, if the runway's halfway lined up with your approaching course, what are your thoughts on just dropping the pattern altitude and flying an overhead pattern? Where you go over midfield, break, and come around?
I like that idea. And that would prevent what Bob just talked about.
I mean, there's nothing illegal or wrong about it.
No, you can do it on... Most G8 pilots don't do that, but you certainly can. You can see in the book, and you can do it. We've talked about it some before, like with Aspen, I've done that before. I think that's a great idea, if you're out there far enough, you see nobody coming, nobody's on the radio, get down to your pattern altitude, and just do your overhead pattern. I like that. Yes?
Just to go ahead and back up my Canadian ticket, and that is, the recommended procedures, fly over the airport and turn into the downwind. It's not 45 and down with us as an alternate.
Right.
Canada, it's all the time.
Yeah.
So if the runway's longer, why not potentially aim 1,000 feet down?
Those 1,000-foot markers are there for a reason, and one of the issues that we have with people on their instrument checks is they get to the disapproach point, and then they almost always go underneath the glideslope. Okay? And I think it's the fault of our training, because when you're working on your privates, aim for the numbers, aim for the numbers, aim for the numbers, aim for the numbers. Put it on the numbers, put it on the numbers. And then when you get to instrument stuff, now you're supposed to stay on that glide path and land on the 1,000-foot marker. So we kind of do it to ourselves, and the main argument's a really, really good point. That 1,000-foot marker gives you an awful lot of protection.
Good margin there. Feel weird, are you? Right here. They would put you on here as a new member, you were the last one. Yes, I was. Did you introduce yourself? Take my name off and you do that. I've been here forever.
Hi, Bill.
When do I get to return? You won't blame Taylor. Speaking of that, Dave Taylor, who's been a member for now two years.
Two years.
Yep. Is now...
I actually made a meeting, my excuse is Chuck would always tell me the wrong night, and I would come here.
This is your first meeting.
First meeting, yeah, so I'm happy, so thank you.
So, just briefly, tell us about you, your flying, your experience.
I started out in gliders a long time ago, and then I got a Mirage. Chuck taught me how to fly safely, which I appreciate. And then I sold it, and then I got checked out in the series, and I fly at Pitts and Super Cup also, so... Good to meet you guys after a year and a half.
Yeah. Please join us more often.
Yeah, okay. Now that I know you have pizza, I'll come. Pizza and beer, I'll be here.
Where did Bud go?
Bud said it didn't.
Where am I missing? There you are, you hired me on, Jason, sorry. So the next slide is your grandson, but he couldn't make it, so...
We'll try to get him here next month.
At least I knew this one's...
Next month.
Yeah. Bird, maybe next month.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. New developments, as Bob mentioned, we have this R20 G6 Perspective Plus. Is there any history, Bob, to the tail number? Sure, or not?
Okay. Yes, yes, it is.
Do a spot there, Mike?
My wife and I were married in 1968, and DC stands for Bobco.
Bobco. Nice. Married in 68, Bobco. Before I move on, anybody here for the first time? Yes, definitely, not familiar, so introduce yourself, please.
Just visiting, my name's Steve, and it popped up on the EAA website, so...
Excellent. Where are you from?
Uh, here.
Okay. Awesome.
Just dropped my private last year, so...
Okay. Good work, thanks for that.
Working on it now.
Okay, awesome. Welcome. There is a sign-up sheet going around, if anybody missed that, please put your initials on there so we know you were here. Who knows that, well, we got AirVenture, we talked about that July 24th through the 30th. So that's always a fun time to go up there, quite a few people are going to here, to have some fun. Area Forecast is going away, does anybody know that? Is this news to anyone? And they're replacing it with what they call the Graphical Forecast for Aviation. That's the website for it. Has anybody been there and looked at it? No?
I think Sporty's had a little video about it.
Yep, let me just take a minute.
Pretty good research, actually.
It'd be nice if you showed it to us. Yeah. So I'm on that website, the issueweather.gov/GFA. So I can do this without trashing everything here. Maybe.
This is where one picture's worth 10,000 words.
That's right. The cable's not working, oh, there it goes. So, if you stay here, you can see up along the top, we have the ability to go along and turn on different things. Right now, I put the clouds on, coverage, you see right here, we've got clouds. And it's Overcast 3,500, Layered to 6,000. So it's really nice, you always wondered where the cloud tops are. Now, I don't know how accurate it is, but this is what they're telling us. So we'll have to find out if we play with it for a while. Nice part is, we can run it ahead in time, you see, right now it says plus one hour here. And we can just move that over, move that slider. And you can get an idea of what, five, six, 12 hours from now, what you're anticipating you're gonna run into. So, pretty neat system, precipitation, winds, lots of choices up there, we can turn on and off. So, I'd suggest you check it out, play with it, and see what you think. So right now, like, let's say, I use Duots, and Duots has the area forecast. Are they gonna replace the area forecast in with this on Duots? I don't know the answer to that, I would say probably. And there's other services people use too that have area forecasts. Yeah, so I think the issue became, it's a safety problem, where you used to call up your area forecast, and you touch the thing, and there's the whole thing, you read this text, and you go, huh? Well, that just told me. That's true. So now, we actually have a picture that can help us understand what it is. I think Duots probably have a link for this, maybe? Yes. Yeah. So, good stuff.
Yeah, there's a consideration on this, it's still... I use the area forecast a lot, and it helped me decide whether or not I would follow off. And it'll be interesting to see how this works as well, because when the area forecast says outlook is VFR, it'll be a good check on not following off.
Yeah.
Oh, what does it...
Yeah, I don't know.
I guess I'm gonna have to play with it, too.
Some thinking, so let's check this out real quick. We got the thermal forecast here. And there's your TAFs, and we can go ahead, I'm looking nine hours in the future right now, four hours from now. So it's pulling all your TAFs in the area that you got zoomed into.
Yep.
Oh yeah. So you checking my geography, is that what you're doing? Okay. So what's that saying? Denver is, is that the winds? Is that what that little green thing is? Oh, you click on it, I get it. Touch it, and it lights up, and it tells you everything that's going on there. Pretty neat. Okay?
I'm sorry. What's the site again?
I'm sorry? It's, uh, hang on, I'll look at this back up, and then we'll show you right here.
Wind does the vector.
There it is.
That's CFA, the best one here. On air graphic forecast.
Oh, you did. Okay. Okay, let's keep moving here. Okay, so our approach of the month.
Chuck, just one more thing, there's events coming up. 21st of August, gonna be a solar eclipse. A lot of folks are getting airplanes to fly up to Nebraska and Wyoming to participate in this thing, so... Might be a little fun out and back trip on that day, or...
Going to Casper, is that right? What's the big deal? What's the big deal going up pretty north? You see it out there?
That's the track where it's gonna be, the eclipse.
Totally. Okay. So you might see a partial eclipse here.
It's gonna be really crazy. I mean, it'll be stop-and-go traffic on the roads getting up there.
You could be in that shadow.
Well, I know what you're gonna do, the same thing, and there won't be... And there's a lot of airports that are figuring out, you know, we're gonna have problems.
Yeah, if you go right into that...
You already reserve ramp space at...
Bring your parachute.
Casper.
Bring beads and everything.
I reserve ramp space at Alliance.
You did?
Alliance, right in the middle of the path.
Yeah. So, don't just plan to jump in the plane and fly up there, it'd be just fine.
I guess you could fly up and just surf around until it happened, it's only two minutes, and then come back.
Put your autopilot on, and put it in orbit mode.
It's only two minutes? Yeah.
Yeah. You and a hundred other airplanes.
Oh, yeah.
We're like a hornet.
Something go wrong.
The full eclipse is about two and a half minutes. The whole thing from when the moon catches the sun till it's done is like a couple hours.
I don't know if they do this, but we used to monitor 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. 1, 2, 3.45 is air-to-air, just for chit-chat, 'cause anybody had the scores, you know? But, in a thing like this, where everybody's gonna be in a, I don't know how tight the shadow is, but I don't know, is there a common, do they use 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 as a common frequency? But it might be nice to see if anybody's gonna all be chatting on the same frequency. I'm coming at you head-on.
Good question.
And I'm looking straight at them.
How wide is the shadow, how many miles on the ground? If you're on the plus...
It's not that, it's just like, you know, 20 or 30 or something.
The total is actually fairly narrow, the partial...
Partial's wide, but the double is pretty narrow.
But you might try 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 120, 150 for that, and they'll yell at you, get off.
22, 75, that's a common...
25?
That's the train uses, 12, 75. But, who knows, I mean, it's gonna be...
Hands on.
Okay, so let's talk about...
Total of the solar eclipse is... You can see the ones right in the center. That's Nebraska, this website, you can pick up any, I'm going to Nebraska, so that's what I have down. But then there's the whole country, there's... That's what it looks like all the whole country. It's not all that easy to see.
Oh, and the dark lines, 100% and everything else is less.
Yeah, you can see there's three lines.
You're gonna put 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
The flat earth, or are you gonna think it's the end of the world?
I'm gonna go there when I'm on open anyway.
Okay, let's move on. Here's our approach of the month. Has anybody done this approach into Eagle, the ODA runway 25? Anybody else? So, on a weather day, there are clouds and visibility issues. The first question I need to ask is, can we do this approach? Taking your airplane, and let's start, where does an approach start from typically?
The runway and back.
But it's even beyond that, right?
Yeah, it goes all the way back out, but starts at the end and goes back.
Typically started at IAF, work our intermediate fixes, a final approach fix, get to the runway, go mist approach. So if you cannot do the mist approach, can we do the approach?
No. Part 91, probably.
But you need to coordinate with air traffic control and see if there's an alternate mist approach that you might be able to do. But the question becomes, so we got a climb gradient here somewhere. You got a JEP chart, environment chart here. I'm trying to find my climb gradient. Anybody see it?
Sit that ball note on the JEP chart, just to the left of the profile reader. Is that it? I can't see it.
It says, "For LDA with glideslope 5 Eagle to the airport, 4.3 miles."
I can't see it.
There it is, approach, and it's all again. Structure requires a minimal climb gradient of, I think it's 265 feet per nautical mile to 11,000 feet. So, 265 feet per nautical mile, what does that equate to in vertical speed?
You're doing two miles a minute. Rapid, you need 260 per nautical mile. So, you double that, and you need 5, 20, or so, 550, yeah.
And you're already at, I'm sorry, and you're already at how many, you're at about 8,000 feet?
You better have a turbocharged airplane.
You better have a turbocharged airplane. Well, it's something to consider, if you're gonna go up and do this approach. If you can, if that comply with that, this approach. If you can, if that comply with that missed approach, you could have to do it. Because if you can't, you potentially run into something.
And the missed approach is predicated on doing the miss, the missed MDA in this case, and at the missed approach fix, as opposed to going around because the truck pulled out on the runway.
Good point.
And having to do the miss, say, at night or something.
Yep. So, we're gonna talk about that. Does anybody have this on their iPad, or their devices?
Pull it up.
Sort of hard to read up here, so. Okay. Good. So, you can answer some of our questions, maybe?
On the NACO chart, the climb gradient is right in the middle.
Here?
Up higher, right there.
Oh, right in the middle, yeah, thanks. Minimum climb gradient of two hundred and seventy-five feet per nautical mile to eleven thousand seven hundred.
Okay. Can't do that, you might not wanna be doing this approach in the weather, because you know you're potentially running into something, you can't maintain that climb gradient. Okay? So, next question is, where do we go missed approach if you have a glide slope? Since you have the choice of flying as with the glide slope or without the glide slope. So, if you have a glide slope, when do we go missed approach?
Sipku?
Sorry? Anybody?
Decisions. It's your decision how to.
Okay.
You go. Now, an MDA, if you had the, either you'd go to the MDA and fly to the missed approach point, but one is that, oh, I'm jumping.
Let's just talk glide slope at the moment. Exactly, so, we reached the decision altitude, and we start a missed approach, we don't see the runway there. So, what are the things we have to know to be able to descend out of the decision altitude and continue down? Do you remember all those things?
No.
You?
Runway environment.
Okay.
Runway lights, runway threshold, the wind markings. The vasive cavity.
What approach line is this?
You could descend, if you have the approach lights, you can descend down to hundred feet.
Terminating bar.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a bar. Terminating bar, you can descend further.
And then there's, what's one that talks about, something about a normal descent, or, remember that?
Visual, visual descent.
Well, you need to be in position to make a, a normal approach to the way, no, no dive to the runway, no.
No aerobatics.
There you go.
No dragging, so you have to be in position to make a normal approach.
Good.
Which would be the three, three-degree approach.
Okay. So, since we're talking with the glide slope, what visibility do we need to show the approach, to do the approach with the glide slope?
Twenty-five hundred.
Visibility?
Yeah.
This says three miles.
Three miles?
I don't know what we're looking at here.
So, three miles visibility.
Eighteen hundred feet.
Okay?
What is that twenty-five off of the, where it says LDA slash GS?
Runway two five.
Hello, runway two five, okay, okay.
Okay, so, the point I'd like to make here is, if we do break out of the clouds, and we are three miles from the runway, let's say we're three and a half miles from the runway. And we have to have three miles visibility, right? We're not gonna see the runway if we're three and a half miles out when we come down at our decision altitude. So, what I have my problem with, and that's why I put both charts up here, this is Jefferson. Where does Jefferson show you reaching the decision altitude? Looking at the JEP chart. About there. Kevin, you were probably there, is that correct?
Oh, I hate when you do that.
I know.
I can't really see it very well from here.
You got a solid line, and it goes from a solid line, and it goes right there, and it starts going back up in the air. Versus my dotted line, which is my MDA, driving up to my missed approach point.
Stand?
Yeah.
And you reach it before you get to the missed approach point, or the altitude.
From the NACO chart, the missed approach point looks like it's.
Well, I believe they show the, you're coming down to three point five from the localizer, right? At Sipku?
Three point five.
Right, Doug?
It's two miles from the runway.
Well, it's two miles from the runway, but that's not where the localizer is.
Sipku's two miles out, right?
Two miles from the runway, from the threshold.
Yeah, but we're told by three miles bis.
Okay. Yeah, so, we're gonna, we can, we can go there three miles bis.
Right, so, when you get there, you'll see a mile's worth of runway if you have three miles of visibility.
No. Because, let me look at the, you got the chart out there?
Oh, okay.
What does this say? For LDA with glide slope, fly visual to the airport, four point three miles.
I don't have that, that note. Okay.
So, is that telling you that when I break out and I reach my decision altitude, I still have four point three miles to get to the airport?
Well, that's not the way the profile is drawn, though. I do see the note now, but it's not the way the profile is drawn. Profile takes me clear down to eighty-three thirty at Sipku. We've got a solid line that goes down to that point.
Well, I, I see that climbing before Sipku. Right where this ball is here?
See, I think what you're seeing here is the, is the MDA for not having the glide slope at four point three miles.
Well, what's the dotted line coming across again?
The dotted, the dotted line that's higher?
Yep.
Is for the non-precision approach.
Right.
So, that would be the MDA at eighty-six twenty. Agreed?
Yes.
All right.
I agree, the dotted line is the minimum descent altitude.
So, the, the glide slope takes me down to eighty-three thirty at three and a half miles from the localizer, IESJ. And that three and a half miles from the localizer is depicted on the profile as two miles from the threshold.
But there's also an interesting point that you have to consider up at top, it says, fly visual to airport authorized during day only, and at night, increase LDA slash GS visibility to five miles.
Okay.
So. In other words, during the day, you're supposed to fly visual. Four point three miles, and at night, your visibility is now five miles.
Right. So, they've increased the visibility requirement to do the approach to five miles at night.
And during the day, it's four point three miles, because that's where you're supposed to fly visual. You at least have to see the ground.
Okay.
So, it's not four point three miles visibility, but you, from four point three miles, you gotta at least see what you're doing.
You gotta go visual, right?
So, in other words, you can't break out at three miles and say, oh, I'm here. It just don't work, either day or night.
Well, I think the point is, it's very confusing to me. Is it confusing to anyone else?
Well, one thing you need to know is, where are they measuring that DME? And this is a.
From the localizer.
A localizer DME is not different than say that snow VOR DME, or it'd be different from an RNAV approach, which would put the, into the, you'd be red at the end of the runway. So, this one, the localizer antenna is at the far end of the runway, and that's what's generating, that's why there's a mile and a half difference, because of the length of the runway, to the, from that two-mile fix to the localizer antenna is another mile and a half.
Okay?
So, so, those are things worth noting, is what the picture you're gonna see when you.
Exactly.
When you hopefully break out.
So, let's look at this government chart over there. Where does this show visually when you're gonna reach the decision altitude?
Sipku.
Sipku.
Kevin, you're telling me that the JEP chart showed me reaching the decision altitude at Sipku also?
Well, that's what I saw, yeah. May I see your JEP chart again? Thank you.
It was my understanding, this solid line, Kevin?
Oh, yeah.
This solid line down here, on the JEP chart?
Yes.
Isn't that where we're going this?
That's what it looks like, yeah, from here. Again, I don't have the chart up close where I can see it very well, but, but I agree with you, that it looks like they've plotted a visual descent point further up from Sipku, before you get to Sipku, is that right?
They usually label it, though, is with a V and a ball.
I can't see what the ball is, is that a note ball?
Looks like a note to me, but I can't.
Thank you.
That's the note where it says fly visual to.
You don't have that.
It's on Sipku, four point five, two miles. That's all correct, or the same, I should say. And here, you're right, they show you breaking off. Fly visual to the airport, four point three miles. That's gotta be from the localizer, which is gonna be down here. So, by the way, the runway is almost two, two miles long, it's nine thousand. Oh, okay, thanks. It's not, listen, it's not uncommon for JEP charts not to be the same as the NACO charts. So, which one's correct?
That's exactly why I'm bringing this up, thank you.
But that's the challenge. So, what I can do is, I can show you in the code, where we've coded that for the FMS, so we can see how it's been coded. But when it gets coded, it gets coded right off a piece of paper, that I'll show you guys the next time we hit together.
Right. About August.
That's when we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll make sure that we get this approach, and we can pitch through this one.
I like it.
And it'll be a lot of fun, I think you guys will get a big kick out of it.
Because my concern is, I look at this, which, a lot of people use this, and that's showing my decision altitude right at Sipku, which is not.
Obviously, when you reach decision altitude, it's time you go to the front, you don't see the runway.
Right. And so, but the, the question you have when you're sitting in the airplane is, what's the instrument gonna read when I reach that descent, or that missed approach point? Is it gonna say I'm at Sipku, or is it gonna say I'm at four point three?
Or, in my case, it's gonna say, I just got to eighty-three thirty, and I'm going missed approach.
Right.
So, it's gonna say four point three.
Which is the more important thing to keep in mind, you hit eighty-three thirty, and now you gotta make your mind up, are you going around, or you're gonna, and you got the necessary.
Now, I'm trying to take what we talked about, is when can you descend below the decision altitude? If the visibility is only three miles, and I hit the decision altitude four miles from the airport, I'm not gonna see any of those seven or eight things you just rattled off.
But it's. But it's not four miles from the airport.
So, it's from the localizer.
It's gonna be from the localizer, is the way I read it.
So, we'll be able to clarify it next month, because you'll bring the code, and help us figure it out.
I'll, I'll show you what's coded, and I can show you what's in the source.
Yeah, four point three DME, you're supposed to have, during the day, you're supposed to have enough to fly visual.
Right.
You may not be able to see the runway, but you're supposed to have enough terrain to fly visual. That's what she said.
So.
So, what you're saying is, when you hit that, that point where you're at the MDA, the decision altitude, you'll continue straight ahead along the localizer visually? Until you have the runway environment side, is that what you're saying?
When you hit four point three, according to my reading, you fly during the day, it's not like at night, you have to have, you have to have enough visibility to fly visual.
Three miles, right.
No. Fly visual, well, you have to be able to maintain visual contact to fly visual.
Right.
And, and then, that's separate from your three-mile minimum visibility, because you have to fly visual now when you get nearer to the airport.
Right.
You've been flying from four point three.
So, you, if you had three miles of visibility, which is the minimum visibility required, you would fly for a mile point three without seeing any runway, is what you're saying?
Well, except that those measurements are from the localizer.
Exactly.
So, you would actually, at four point three, theoretically, if you were obeying the rules, you would actually be able to see the runway.
Right. How far is, how far is Sipku from the localizer?
The Sipku is ten point five.
Right. And so, you've got another eight tenths of a mile to fly visually to get to that point, right?
So, what happens when you've been arguing this, when you're co-piloting for half an hour, and your high net worth occupant that wants to get somewhere is getting upset because you're not off the ground yet? What do you do?
You're arguing about it. So, that's my whole point of this, is to study the approach well in advance, understand exactly all the notes, and mentally fly it. So, here's the next question. You're flying as a non-precision without the glide slope. Okay? So, we get on to the MDA. What visibility do we have to have to fly this approach without the glide slope?
Two and a half.
Two and a half miles. Okay?
That makes sense, right?
I'm sorry?
That makes sense, doesn't it?
No.
Oh, of course, yeah.
So, with precision, you need three, non-precision, you need two and a half.
Right.
So, that was bringing you down, but you need better visibility.
I don't know the logic, but, now we're two and a half miles, right? Because we, we're flying the MDA, we're coming in, and we know we've got two and a half miles visibility, which means, Kevin, am I wrong? I won't see the runway until I'm two and a half miles from it.
That's correct.
Okay. So, given what we just talked about, when can you descend from the MDA? Runway environments, threshold wise, approach lights.
Touchdown zone, all that.
How high above the ground are we at the MDA?
Eighty-six, twenty, or two thousand.
Two thousand feet, twenty-one hundred.
Two thousand feet, two and a half miles from the runway. What kind of descent does that sound like?
Uh, you're gonna want flaps, probably. You're gonna have some speed rates, too.
And the interesting thing about that is, if you look at the MDA horizontal dash climb, this one's on glide slope. That's more than, that's more than two and a half miles, looks more than two and a half miles from the runway threshold, because it's before Sipku.
Right. Well, that's where you're leveling off at the MDA.
You're gonna level off, but.
But you don't have to see the runway yet.
Okay, so, here's my question for you, Chuck. What in the world were they thinking when they did this, and why wouldn't they have just made that a circling approach?
That's a great question.
And is this the same government I'm gonna trust with other things?
I bet it would be traffic, because there gets to be a lot of people that goes in there for holidays.
Definitely.
They want people either out of there or in.
With the ski season and all that. So, there's my point. If we haven't looked at this in advance, we're two thousand feet in the air, above the ground, we're driving in, we can't see the runway yet.
Better hope you can do that two hundred and seventy-five feet per nautical mile now, because we're going around.
That's right, maybe. So, two and a half miles from the runway, you go, oh, there it is. So, now, what did you say, Mike, about the?
Three to one.
Normal descent, blah, blah. So, if I got full flaps, and now do I just go into this horrendous full slip and come down at four thousand feet a minute, too? That's what they would do.
That's what I would give, yes.
If you got a surge, you just pull over the field, pull the.
How long is the runway? Get him to pull the chute, pull the chute.
Two miles, nine thousand feet.
Nine thousand feet.
It's cheaper than burning up all that gas on those jets.
So, do we, GA pilots, have to land in the first thousand, two thousand feet of the runway?
No.
Now, big guys do it, right? One twenty-one, you have to land within the touchdown zone area, is that what this is?
Yeah, the aim point, within a reasonable distance of that.
So, the point here is, can we see the runway and go, okay, I'm not gonna slip and come down at four thousand feet a minute, because that breaks the rules. But I could pick an aiming point two thousand feet down the runway, and do a normal descent down there potentially, and land with seven or six thousand feet of runway left. So, that's not undoable. But don't go into the, go, I gotta aim at the numbers, and come down at two thousand feet a minute.
So, an interesting point might be, one of these, there's two options of how to fly this approach. What is ATC, approach controller's gonna tell you what, and does he give a damn what you're gonna do? Or does the tower even care what you're gonna do, other than you're gonna do one of these approaches? So, what would you hear from the approach controller when he's gonna release you to shoot the approach?
Would he, would he lead you to the IAF?
Either one of them, yeah, let's say he clears your direct order, is that Kremlin? Clear for the LDA, DME, runway two five approach. That's all he's gonna say. They don't care what you do. They don't care if you got an MDA or glide slope. So whatever you think you're best set up for is what you do, but they don't care. They're just gonna clear you for that procedure, just as the title says.
Exactly. And then it's up to you to decide what's best for you to get the airplane safely in there.
Kremlin's actually out of line on that.
Just an FYI, that's a private tower. Eagle. And I had a friend that worked there a few years back, and they had her there by herself on Christmas Eve. And it was so busy, she literally told me she had to go to the sink to go to the bathroom. She didn't even have time to get a break, it was so busy up there.
Sounds like a management problem to me.
Sounds like a company trying to make money, which gets back to, we don't need privatization.
So don't drink the water in Eagle.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
No drinking while traveling. Okay, so my whole point of bringing this up and talking about it is, not all approaches are created equal. This is not your typical approach. So you gotta make sure you've studied in advance, argued your...
Have you ever been up there in a little Cirrus or anything, Eagle?
Oh, you have?
Yeah, been up there a few times.
And of course, if the, if the visibility is down, it's probably winter time. If you're looking at possible runway contamination.
Right.
So if you decide to land long, and that end of the runway is gonna be less, or it's gonna be more contaminated.
Yep, you're right. Because everybody else is landing on the...
Well, one of the things that I found out is that departure end of the runway tends to be a lot clearer. At this, at this big airport, because the jet's taken off all the heat from the engines, burned off all the, all the, all the, um, snow and ice.
At the departure.
And the far end, you know, you've predicated V1 and, you know, whatever, and the other end is slick as can be, and they've never factored that in, because nobody ever wants to go that far with it.
Don't ask the question, who wants the answer?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
One last thing, this is, this is an LDA approach.
Right.
And so, I think an LDA can be up to what? How many degrees are you gonna tell us right there? So that's an important thing to see what your picture's gonna look like when you break out.
Here's the LDA, it's a question. So there's also a thing called an SBF. That can have, of course, what, the six to twelve degrees. LDA not aligned with the runway. And thirty degrees you could have off from the runway alignment there. And it's a circling, means run coach, remind it, seek stairs, there was Kevin's answer for the circling. Anyway, this is all out of the aim. Talking about an LDA.
This one's pretty close, so, but...
Yeah, pretty good lined up.
There's a hill to the left, is why that's offset.
Okay.
But some are more, and so when you break out, the runway's thirty degrees. That's not a picture if you hadn't thought about it. In a, well, say night or elsewhere, you talk about being disoriented, if you're not prepared to see that picture.
Where's the runway gonna be when I do break out? It may not be up in front of me.
And then you add in the crosswind component. Could be worth the thirty degrees out of the window, too.
Now the airplane's pointing, weather veiny, yeah, thirty, forty degrees off.
Yeah.
That's why when you see it, you get right back on the gauges. Especially low visibility or at night, you get right back, now you're doing a scan between the gauges and the runway.
Yep.
Never leave the gauges till you're close to the ground.
So how do the guys that are flying the seven-five-sevens get in there with this approach?
They don't, they do the ILS if they have.
Oh, okay.
And in some cases, they may have a customized...
Oh, they have their own...
They may have their own customized RMM GPS approach that Jep would have, they would work with Jep.
Super secret.
Taylor, call Taylor.
Yeah, Taylor.
Why don't we get...
And, and, well, and it's a special crew authorization required.
It doesn't show that the RMM GPS.
So that isn't LPV?
It is circling numbers.
They've got another approach that big guys use. Anyway, let's move on. I've been there, done it.
Okay. I'll believe it.
So, does anybody know where to find this table if you need to reference that? What Mike was suggesting as well, we're typically about a hundred and twenty, so we'll just double it. Uh, but if you're in a smaller plane, maybe, and you're only doing a hundred and ninety knots, does anybody know where to find this table to reference it if you need to?
It was a good little thing in Sporty's advertisement, they go out, some things you can find, and they had a little video, and that was the first I knew of it.
Okay. So it's in your app, whatever app you use, you can typically find this table in there. This one's from Jep, so their ForeFlight has them, Garmin Pilot has them, and so you can find the table. Make sure you know how to find it, use it if you need to. So there was a picture I took as I loaded the approach into the Garmin system, so you get an idea, so it's showing Sipku as in this approach point, but that's for the MDA, for non precision version. And Mike had a really good point, which was, if you reach that decision altitude, start your missed approach and get that climb going right away. Don't be hanging out, going, driving along, because you now are gonna have a much higher climb during the entire flight. So don't be driving along and not climbing at your decision altitude. Okay. Let's go through our scenario IMC club. Here in my video, we like to do this. So, let's see if I can make this work.
Welcome to this month's IMC Club meeting. Safety and proficiency through education and experience. Today's club meeting. What's your glide ratio? Think about your experience, your currency, and your proficiency. Whether you're a very experienced instrument pilot or someone who just got their instrument rating, try to picture yourself in this discussion and what actions you might have taken. Today's discussion is based on a scenario submitted by one of our IMC club members. For today's exercise, you're going to be flying your aircraft. Choose an aircraft you own, rent, or one you fly most often and more likely that you're most familiar with. Whether it's a Cessna one seventy-two or a Cirrus SR twenty-two. Please be ready to share your thoughts with the group. It's October, and you plan a flight to visit a friend for their sixty-fifth birthday party that evening. You'll be flying your airplane from Chicago Executive Airport in Wheeling, Illinois, in the late morning for a three and a half hour flight to Atlanta, Georgia. About two and a half hours after takeoff, you're crossing the Louisville VOR, it's solid IMC. You're told by ATC to climb from six thousand to nine thousand. As you're climbing through seven thousand feet, the engine is starting to shake so badly, you think you could leave the aircraft. You reduce some of your remaining power and the engine promptly quits. What would you do?
Declare an emergency. Okay?
Pitch out, it's fine.
Pitch for best glide, declare the emergency. How you would do best glide first, and then talk. Okay?
Switch tanks.
Switch tanks.
Change our oil pressure.
Change the mixture.
Trouble shield, basically.
Okay?
Cycle nine.
Cycle nine.
Tell my wife to stop screaming.
Yeah, you're number one, wasn't it?
Wife is hard, no, we're here. Silence the passenger on the intercom panel, so we're not getting distracted by that. So we are, what are we, at seven thousand, climb to nine, I think?
Six thousand.
Six thousand going up to nine, pass them to seven, I think.
Yeah, we're passing seven.
Okay. So, does anyone have any idea how high above the ground we are?
Kentucky, six thousand fifteen hundred feet.
Kentucky, probably a thousand fifteen hundred feet is the ground. Okay? So we are, we just passed the VOR. The engine quit. So what else should we be trying to think about?
Airports. Nearest.
Nearest airport, how do we find that?
There's the nearest button, nearest.
Yeah. So how many people fly their airplane with the nearest button on, where you can actually see all the airplane, airports nearby? Okay? Not a pretty good best practice, I think. It just doesn't cover up much of your primary flight display there. But your nearest, excuse me.
Did you hit the GPS direct nearest?
Yep. So, from there, we got our nearest up. Who flies with like a G one thousand typically? So from the nearest page, you can hit direct enter, enter, and start heading that direction. So you're gonna get your best glide, start heading for that airport. All right? Now we've talked, Dave, too soon, you have an emergency, says, how can I help? I don't know, let me call you back, I'm busy right now. Nearest airport, he might be able to help you with that. Okay? Here's a sectional version of it. There's the VOR, we're right in here. We're about seven thousand feet, I believe the terrain here is more like five hundred to a thousand, something like that. I think this airport's maybe five hundred feet. So we're gonna start heading for what we think is the nearest airport. It looks like that one, this little private strip, I don't know much about those. So the question is, can we glide back to that airport? Okay? So Taylor, I'm blaming us on Taylor.
Emergency.
Who comes up next? Okay? We're flying the airplane, we're setting up our best glide, we're not panicking. We're analyzing what's going on, we're trying to figure it out. We're heading for the nearest airport. We got best glide going. And then hopefully land as soon as conditioned for that. If we can make it to that airport. For those Cirrus drivers, we can consider the chute. Okay? So you can see why we go to best glide. Versus if we're too fast or too slow, we may not make it back to that airport. So today, we had this discussion today. What else did we talk about doing in the Cirrus?
What, what we've trained on is you go to nearest in nav mode, so you're going to where you wanna go, then you dial in your, on the IAS mode or FLIT mode, the airspeed you want. So now you're going to where you wanna go, you got your best glide, you can, then you can start troubleshooting and think about what you're gonna do, and you figure out what your glide ratio is and can you make it or not. You ought to have that on the tip of your tongue, what the glide ratio is, so many miles per thousand feet AGL.
You gotta consider the winds.
Need to consider winds, no question. So, when you see the nearest page, and you're seven thousand feet, let's call the terrain a thousand, just to make the math easy. We're six thousand feet above the ground. How far can your airplane glide in six thousand feet? Six thousand feet AGL?
At six miles.
So one mile per thousand feet for yours? Anybody else? I'm curious, just a thought, how many people in here know what their best glide speed is in their airplane? Hopefully, everybody. I'd like that number to be memorized, but also, how far can I glide from each thousand feet above the ground is another one you probably wanna know. Okay? So if you don't know those two numbers for your airplane, you probably wanna look them up and know them. Because it could be a matter of making it back to the airport or not. So we figured out for the Cirrus, today we were looking in the books, and we say one and a half is, we're pushing it, maybe one point four.
One point four mile per thousand.
A thousand?
Yeah. The math's easier, one and a half, and you know you're a little over it, so.
Right. But winds are important, you're right.
Because if you're going into the wind, you'd speed up.
Well, and you may not make it either.
Exactly, you may not.
All right. Who has their foreflight set up with their little glide thing on there now? Yeah, that's pretty handy. I've not tried it, see how accurate it is.
I haven't seen it.
It sure looks cool. You got the airplane, you got this little ring around these, the higher you go, the wider the ring is.
Okay, makes sense.
Try it some day and see if it really works. Yeah. Okay, so know your best glide speed, and know how far you can glide based on how high above the ground you are. Okay, so we got the pitch and trim, height above the ground, how far can I glide? Talked about the wind. Nearest airport, are we gonna be able to make it? Again, if you're in your Cirrus and the airport's seventeen miles away, you're six thousand feet above the ground, you're not getting there. So now it's consider parachute. So here's a question. When you're flying along in the soup, how many people are using all the tools available to them to know what's going on down below the soup? Is it a three hundred foot ceiling, or is it a three thousand foot ceiling? So you might be able to glide to the airport, but it's a three hundred foot ceiling. Good luck on that one. For the three thousand feet, now you got a good chance of potentially getting to the airport, spiraling down and doing a landing, if you're skilled to do that, hopefully you are. If you're not, again, you're in your Cirrus.
I'm sorry.
Then you also gotta figure out your chute again.
I will tell you a little anecdote story that I was in the periphery of. We were coming out of San Juan, coming back to Memphis. And up on one twenty-one-five came a fellow in a one seventy-two, saying he was out for a little flight, he was a, he was a student pilot, out for a flight, and all of a sudden, I can't see the ground. The whole area of southern Georgia, north Florida, was completely fogged in. And he said, and I'm getting low on gas, and the ATC came up, and he was on one twenty-one-five. So that's how we heard and got involved, and that we were in the vicinity. And they said, well, we're gonna vector you right over the top of Warner Robbins. And they did. You're right over the airport, what do you see? Nothing. I'm running out of gas. And so, the last thing, I had an opportunity to speak to him, I don't know if you heard me or not, I said, well, when you run out of gas, trim the airplane for, I don't know, seventy miles an hour, sixty knots, whatever you got. And just keep the wings level and don't do a thing, and good luck. I didn't hear a thing from him, anybody, but six months later, there's a filler in the paper, airplane in the woods, trees, in the swamp, south of Warner Robbins, and they both survived. I don't know if he, if he did, kept the wings level, obviously he didn't stall spin, but he went in and it was... Must be the same guy calling you. But he, whatever he did, he kept it together, and he had to fess up that he had a passenger with him.
He had to crash into the tree.
Yeah, they, yeah, so. Anyway, it was a, we never knew what happened until we saw the filler in the paper later with the tree. And the, the airplane didn't make it to the ground, it got hung up in the canopy, so. In the swamp.
Probably didn't get his ticket either.
Did he get married?
Yeah, he works for the FAA today, so.
If he was directly over the airport, they should have told him to just...
Well, you know, they took him over and, he probably was better off where he was, less hazard to people and property, so.
Doing turns in the fog, he probably...
He's better just, you're better off, in that case, do not turn the airplane. Just look, wings level, best glide speed. And in fact, at that point, if you know that you don't have, you're not going anywhere, you might get it configured for best approach speed, the slowest you can get it, and keep it under control. And go, and they used to say, if you can, if, if you're gonna let, crash into the forest, pick two trees out and go right between them. So, let the wings absorb the, the energy, so.
Okay? So, as I cruise along on cross-country flights, I'm continually looking out there with the bird's eye tar flags, or checking weather along the way, and see what's down below me, so I know what to expect. I'll do lose engine, we're preparing for that. There's that nearest airport page again. If you highlight the airport, actually, I took two different pictures that showed nearest here, but you highlight KAPA and hit the enter button, you can get more information about the airport. You get frequencies, runway lengths, approaches that are available, airport elevation. So, some good stuff there. If you think you can make it, direct enter, start heading that direction.
Yeah, if you're a mile up, you got a problem.
Yep.
Yeah, I've just read the Cirrus, you know, the visual field, and they just said engine out, gear down, full chute.
Okay.
Could be, that's exactly, they don't even, any, any landing other than a paved landing is gonna be ugly. Your nose gear's gonna clap, your handle.
It's the current guidance in Cirrus, because they've had so many successful parachute poles, and not so many good.
Yeah, the other thing is, they've never had a fire.
Right.
Which is incredible.
Well, that's.
That's what kills a lot, you say.
Yeah. I'd probably get killed on fire by a boulder reservoir, that's the guy who hit that dome high.
Yeah.
If you got on fire with parachute down, and my brother jumped out. Boulder fire.
Okay, so here's another little tidbit for everybody. On, this is from Garmin Pilot, but it's also available on ForeFlight, probably most of the other apps. Little tabs you can turn on, on the top of your app or the bottom of your app, shows GPS altitude above the ground. So that's pretty handy to have that running when the engine quits. You simply look there and say, five thousand feet, okay? Let's see, five thousand, one and a half, about seven-ish miles. Go back to nearest, and it's twelve miles away. So make it. And this is our chart, where you can figure out per thousand feet, how many miles you can go, that's in your VOR, so if you don't know that, go look at that. All right, so the Cirrus caps again in the Cirrus. Here's our engine restart for the Cirrus again. Probably good to know for your airplane what the restart procedure is, to see if it's running. Not something you're gonna go. Pull out your checklist and start looking through as you're gliding to the airport, looking at what you're seeing going on, now it's that restarts? This is probably one you wanna, wanna know all the steps. But not by, she says, Gary, don't forget the beer. Okay, so bottom line here is, are you prepared for this to happen? If you are, you're gonna handle it much better than if it's a big surprise, and you never even thought through it. Before I go there, let's let Gary take a moment, because Gary had his engine fail pretty much in the weather. Some of you may have heard the story already, others that are new to us haven't. So just recap, Gary, what happened, and then your, what I call the starboard factor of your brain, and what happened.
Yeah, we're at twenty-one thousand IFR, going to Sun Valley, Idaho, and the engine just immediately started running horribly rough like it's gonna fly out.
And where were you?
At ninety miles, this side of Sun Valley, by Pocatello. So I, yeah, which I didn't know where Pocatello was, you know? So it's like, flying with Utah Center, so I declared an emergency, I screwed her up the mixture, and, you know, it was just done, you know? So I just declared an emergency, and just, we were real high, so, you know, we're ten miles past Pocatello, so. And it was still running a little bit, I was making about twenty-two percent, and I could back it up to where it was shaking, to where I didn't feel like the motor would fly out. So we were all IFR, and it's amazing, you know, when I, it's just vector me, just give me heading out, you know, heading back, you know, where I need to be, to an ILS, to the nearest airport. And I didn't know how far we'd go, you know, cause how do you figure, look, you've got twenty percent, twenty-two percent horsepower, God, your glide ratio sure changes. So he, I'm trying to program in an avodyne, which is really easy, it took me four times. Of course, I had to tell the girlfriend quit freaking, you were screaming. You know, it's, yeah, it's a trauma, man, it's amazing, I could do that in my sleep, on my Garmin, I don't know if I. No, I think I could do it in your sleep, but four times, I freaked me out, it's kinda like, geez.
Was it adrenaline rush or?
Yeah, yeah, you're just, you don't think straight, and then I got it in, and then, you know, and then the controllers bring me really wide, honestly. Really wide away from the airport, it's like, man, can't you tuck me, ankles, no, there's a mountain there. I says, we're way too wide, you know? So it's, we broke out of the clouds, it was eleven hundred overcast, thousand overcast. And I, you know, and then it's just descending light runway. So now I'm on with Tower, and Tower's going, "Don't you have one of them parachute deals?" "They sure do, buddy." So we just circled away from the high voltage lines and then pulled it.
Oh, you did pull it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, thanks for the reminder, oh yeah, watch this.
No, it's, no, it's a good reminder, because you, you just, for some reason, you think you could bring it into the airport, and as soon as I could see it was descending, it's like, we're not gonna make it. And there's high voltage line between me and there, that would be real ugly. So we just landed in a, in an Indian reservation, and forty, forty-five knot ground wing. That was a trip. It was going backwards, forty-five, I don't know if it's a forty-five, maybe thirty or something, huh?
I mean, how'd you get out of the plane?
We kept moving, I've got pictures of it, and then videos of it, once we jumped out, it just kept moving, so I jumped out, it's going this way towards me, side, completely sideways. Just dragging the gear sideways. So it'd accelerate, and it would open, you know, and then do this, like, it'd speed up and slow down. So open the door and go, hey baby, there we go. So she heard it laying jumping out. Then I jumped out, and then we got videos of it rolling over the hill, never stopped moving until I hit about a mile and a half, it gets.
So you would've stayed in the plane, you would've.
We'd have been dead. I don't know, yeah, we'd have been dead, cause it ended up cartwheeling, and then it went upside down when it was being pulled. And then broke the plex out, and then just was just digging mud, upside down, so the cockpit was just full of mud. And then it ended up in high voltage lines, so it, they're carbon fiber, and the burn spots are like this big under my. That would've, I don't know, I don't know if you'd have made that call, I had my doubts.
What was your altitude when you pulled the chute?
Eight hundred.
That low?
Seven hundred.
Cause we had parachute pulled during formation flying over Colorado Springs. And we were about eight hundred feet, and the risers didn't fire because there wasn't enough time, so it did an eighty-degree nose-low attitude into it, just straight into the ground. So you had all this dirt and sand just blow up across, and the engine was off at almost a ninety-degree angle to the plane, but the cockpit completely stayed intact, and there were.
Yeah, very tough.
There were three people in the plane, and the harnesses took everything. You know, they didn't, crush cans in the seat, they didn't use those at all, because it wasn't such a.
Yeah, mine was nose down, that really freaked me out, so we're really hauling ass like this way with the wind, and it was hushed, so. And it's like, it was like this? Yeah.
For a while.
For a while, and I go, you know, I just paid a thousand bucks to get these cutters down, and I go, you could hear them, and they, and then the plane settled. So it, it wasn't level very long, you know something, it's just like a flash, so I don't know how long it was, but I'm sure it was a couple seconds before.
Well, the only thing these guys could think of is how fast the ground's coming up in their face, you know?
Yeah, ours was moving and coming up backwards. Weird. I'm glad I had it, you know?
I was gonna ask if you had any aileron control or a rudder.
No, you're not thinking about that, you have, I just shut the motor off, and, you know, I didn't shut the power off, which I should have, you know, me, your still brained it.
That's a great story.
You really should shut the power off, but ELT hit, and, you know, first, I got a phone call, standing in the field freezing, you know? Oh, it was the military. You know, ELT just went off, maybe minutes.
Yeah, there might be a reason for that.
Minutes, it was really good.
No, I'm saying, you're on, there might be a reason for that.
Yeah, it went off, and then they started waiting to go shut the ignition switch off, like, oh, my plane's blowing over the hill. And then went to the power lines, and it shut everybody's power down. And, and we couldn't touch the plane for almost three hours. So it got dark, hurricane winds, it's freezing, it was just miserable.
Wow.
Yeah. And we, the relatives came from, and picked us up, and.
Who got you out of the field, or did you limp out of the field?
No, we walked, we jumped off the plane.
Okay. No, I mean, from the field to the road, or the near, or did you, was there a road right there?
Oh, those are cops, we went, we got, they had an ambulance show up, and you wanna come in, and maybe it was the hardest impact I've ever seen in my flight ever, it was like weird, but it was even.
But I mean, somebody got into the plane, you, you didn't land next to the road, next to McDonald's.
No, we landed in a field next to a house, and a guy, and a guy came running out, and we're standing there, you know, mid-ing the plane.
Yeah, okay.
And then we went to their house, and the ambulance put us in, and then the cops took us around at least an hour later.
You weren't out in the Monoville salt flats, you know, miles from anywhere.
No, no, we were, no, these, these, these Indians all have, you know, real nice phones in reservations, and they had videos.
And they got a slightly human Cirrus now.
Yeah, and they paid ten grand to do the power lines and whatever, but it was, yeah, the plane was pretty mangled, but the cockpit was really intact. And they burnt the tail off, the high voltage lines wrapped around the tail and the carbon fiber, and the tail just, just like you cut it perfectly, so. And then had the cables were holding the tail on all sideways.
What caused your engine failure?
Twin mag failure. Yeah?
Good, we'll come down.
So, Colorado Springs scenario, the lesson learned there was pull the chute sooner.
Yeah, they waited, I don't know, maybe thirty seconds, twenty seconds, they should've done it right away.
Were they VFR?
Yeah, we were VFR, we were doing formation flying. And, and my plane, we had myself and a safety pilot, and then a photographer in the backseat.
You, you're filming it?
Yeah, he was filming it, you know?
Really, perfect deployment and everything?
He didn't get, he didn't get movies, but he got a lot of skills.
What happened, why, why did his motor fail?
He had just installed a, it was a brand-new plane for him, and before he even started flying it, he had an aftermarket supercharger put on. And it looked like the, one of the oil lines came out.
Like straight flight hit it?
Hmm?
The straight flight?
Yeah, well, he owned straight flight, I believe, I think, down in Colorado Springs.
Oh, wow.
And I think the oil line came off, and he lost all his oil pipe.
I guess sue the mechanic, huh? Sue the mechanic. Yeah, planes break, motors break, I've determined that.
That's why I have to.
Huh?
Let's pack up too.
So, your takeaways are?
Full chute.
The fan.
Yeah, you know, if I was to do it again, I mean, what I learned is, I would've, you know, I would've probably not screwed around as much like you to save the airplane. You know? For some reason, you think you're healthy, you're landing on, on the runway than you are, and you're shooting. You know, in the Cirrus, the training program, it's, you know, you're, you're landing at seventeen miles an hour. Right, and you have crushed seats, and you're, and, and the wheels go through the wings, so there's no gas, it's like, how much gas, I mean, they're just immediately in the field, so they crush the wings. And if you land at sixty-seven, it's like five times the energy. It's unbelievable the difference in being hurt, like that Beechcraft guy who landed in the field, had his gear down, which was stupid, and they ended, and one guy brain damaged, and then that guy did. He landed at seventy-seven, and it just went, and it's it. So it's just, yeah, that's why they sell sixty-six hundred, the stupid things, you know, and it's why Beech had put it on, and Mooney is just mind-boggling, or Cessna is just arm right in.
Weren't you vectored out of VFR back into IFR?
We were vectored out of VFR back into IFR, weren't you? Well, I was IFR twenty-one, and it died, and then we, we got into some VFR, but the ground was all IFR. So we, we, I could see our destination ninety miles off, but it, you know, in between was just all, I knew we were going back to the clouds. So it's, but I, but, you know, I knew, also know it was eleven hundred foot overcast, so we'd have a little time popping through.
So would you pop the chute, would you come out of the overcast, and while you're in the overcast?
I popped it when we, when I, I could visually see the runway, I knew it was eleven hundred feet, so we came on the glide slope, and I was a little bit low, not real low. And it just couldn't maintain the glide slope, so.
Does the Cirrus training provide any guidance, or you just have to kind of wean on your own?
Well, you know, the biggest help that I had was the Tower guy.
Yeah.
Kind of cowboy, hey, one of those got a chute, probably time to use it. Yeah?
That's true.
No, seriously. Yeah, they're switching the fuel pumps off, and switching all electronics off, all that shit I left, you know, just, yeah, you know?
People forget that they have a chute.
Cause really, you don't, really can't go to the emergency procedures when you're IFR hand-flying a plane with the engine, it just doesn't work, I just, I kept it at ninety-five or something, and, and it just kept coming down.
What was your distance from the airport when you pulled the chute?
Five miles. Probably five. So we were coming northeast of it.
Five miles and a thousand feet.
Probably eight hundred, probably, because I broke the feeling, it took me in my brain a while ago, we gotta do this.
Till the guy asked you to do it.
Yeah, while you're just reminded, and, you know?
From what I saw, I wouldn't, I wouldn't trust it at four hundred feet, I'll tell you that. Cause, cause when they pop the chute on this one.
They don't say four hundred.
The chute actually dropped, the chute in the bag actually dropped below the altitude of the airplane. As the airplane's descending, and, and the chute's way back here, and below it, and then it started to fill.
It has to do with how fast you are too.
That's true.
So if you're really descending fast.
He was, he was pretty slow.
If you're coming down fast, you know, I was pretty slow actually, you know, but if you're coming down, you know, say you're a hundred fifty or something, indicated the chute will, will inflate a lot faster than at ninety. But they say with the new G five is seven hundred feet, and mine's seven hundred, seven, right?
Six.
Six, and the other one's five?
But, that's.
Trick or treat, sooner the better.
Yeah, they recommended, if you know you're gonna pull it, you're coming down, a couple thousand feet, that's what they recommend.
Yeah, two thousand or something.
Did the FAA, their investigation determine that you made all the right decisions?
No, they blamed me for not cycling the mags. You know, I talked to John Reddler, he was cycling, he would've just killed the motor, so, you know, it's just, it was just detonating, so it's just turning. So whenever spark, you know, the timing was far off, so you had two mags spinning still, and the timing's just, maybe one spinning, so I'm, we're not sure how many were still spinning.
So they didn't get you for inadequate pre-flight of the aircraft?
Pardon me?
They didn't get you for inadequate pre-flight of the aircraft?
No, I did the mag check.
I know you did a mag check.
Yeah.
Cause mags can fail anytime, anyplace.
Well, the deal is on these planes, the turbos are, you know, you see many stripped mag, we, our insurance company, Sue ain't, you know, give them any back, so we're dealing with that now.
The mags are full of plastic parts and gears.
These are nylon. Yeah, and they, they have found thirty-two, at that point, that's three years ago now, thirty-two stripped gears under it. That's ridiculous. And we don't have a, we don't have an AD, it's just my NTSV strikes. Their whole job is to fix this plane, you know, to go, why is he failing like this, dude, he's got piles up in front of us, and the mechanical, and John, John will not, you know, he won't.
They change them here.
F five hundred, you don't put gears in, we don't do your mags. How hard of an AD is that?
For some reason, the turbos are a lot harder on them too.
Just because they fly in moisture and up high, and.
Well, they get pressurized.
And they're pressurized, yeah, and most Cirrus guys like Nick fly in the clouds, you know, and so you get, there's something about the chemistry that John actually showed me when he take your finger and put it in the mag, here. It's that soft.
All right, I need to finish up, so thank you, good story, good discussion. Mike Sentinett, she was talking August nineteenth, nine AM. Go there if you can, good stuff. Kevin's gonna join us in August, and actually bring in the LVO legal, the coding, and see what, you know, what the heck's going on with her three miles or five miles, five or four miles.
I might change my mind on that. You guys are pretty hard on me today.
How, how charts you made, and how the interesting stuff of how all that works.
We're gonna look at the data, and where the source comes from, and we might compare that to some of the charts. Thank you.
Thanks, there's tons of BTS or.
I've got a question when you're done, done, or whatever. When you get an email from the FAA that says GPS testing at this location, what do you do with that? Other than note it, and, so.
So the fact that they're testing stuff in GPS is gonna be out?
Yeah.
You take the note of it and plan alternative strategies, so when you get this, if you don't have GPS, you gotta do something else.
How, how much of a huge graphic Larry does that cover?
A lot of times, they'll say in the note, you can look in the note, call the flight service station, flight service can answer the question exactly what government area it's in. They'll say it's maybe a little fifty mile radius, or something like that.
I've read the, I've read the prior.
I would call it, call flight service and ask them to place some research for you.
Well, very specific.
If it happens, they turn it on, they jam it or whatever.
I've flown up to an hour and a half, the GPS. Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, they can throw it, it's not used to. Yeah, yeah, it's good, everybody else is up to you.